I'd like to call this meeting to order. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Mr. Elick.
Here.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Here.
Ms. Karstoffen.
Here.
Mr. Hauser.
Here.
And Mrs. Segwin.
Here.
Great, thank you. Would everybody please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to the May 18th, 2022, Leiria Board Meeting. I'd like to introduce our group up here. To my right is Board Member and Vice President Mike Gebhardt. To his right is Board Member Lane Segwin. I am Greg Elick. To my left is Board Member Annie Karstoffen. To her left is Board Member Lynn Hauser. And to his left is our Superintendent Anne Schloss. And all the way down on the end is the award-winning Treasurer, Dr. Lekker. Okay, today we have, starting right off, is a presentation. We have the five-year forecast. Madam Treasurer, would you like to share your five-year forecast?
I would love to. Thank you, President Elick. You received your five-year forecast update in your email on Friday, and I'm just going to hit some of the highlights. I always like to start with the basics, and those are that there are two main reasons why we do this. It's a tool for us to see where we're standing, where we stand financially, and give you kind of a feel for things in the future. What we need to disinvest in, if we have things that we can invest in, or if we need more support from the community. And the second main reason is it fulfills a requirement by ODE and the Auditor of State. This forecast looks only at the general fund. We have about 35 other funds, but those funds, basically, the money that comes in is dictated on how we have to spend it. So, for instance, the Fund 010 is all about the OFCC building project. So, we don't have a lot of say on how to spend that, but we do have those. This is just general fund. I gave you a lot of backup information, but I just want to hit the highlights. Each of the five-year forecasts that we do, and we do it in May, and we also do it in November each year, are just built, it's building upon the previous one that you received. And, excuse me, and we also update it every single month, but it's only brought to you twice a year. Even if the forecast isn't brought to you each month, the numbers are updated with the actual each month, and then anything that's built on a percentage, of course, it trickles through and updates the entire thing. The first forecast a year in this five-year forecast is the current year, which is fiscal year '22. Our fiscal year runs from July 1st through June 30th. So, you're receiving this in May, which means we're only basically estimating one month left in this fiscal year. I usually would tell you that I base things on trends. The COVID and the money we receive from the federal government, the ESAR dollars, have made a lot of our trends not easy to follow right now. So, anyway, I've spent a lot of time on Zoom meetings, listening to experts, and consulting with other Treasurers to come up with some of my best theories. So, what I'd like to do is go through the abbreviated forecast that you have in front of you, and let's just get started. Let's turn to page three. And this is a summary of the entire forecast. Each black bar represents the total revenue. The gray bars represent expenditures. Just real simply put, we like the black bar to be longer than the gray bar, so we're not deficit spending. You can also see the yellow line tells you where our cash balance goes. On top of the black bars, you'll see kind of a salmon color, and those are renewal levies coming due that we have actually calculated into the five-year forecast as passing. But we'll see that later. If we turn to the next page, to page four, it is an overview of all the revenues. And real estate and public utility make up nearly 40% of our total revenues in general fund. And the only other things in there would be the state funding, and you can see that it makes up probably 47% of our funding. And the reason why there's kind of an up and down in this is because of the new state funding and how they've changed, actually turned upside down, how we get funded. So, our expenditures are down by more than our drop in revenues, so our net is still good, but it will show funny for, for the years that this, you know, plays out. Let me see. We now receive a base cost for each student that attends Leiria schools, and we're not charged for the ones that go to the charter schools. So, we used to get funding for every student that lived in our district, and then we had to pay out per student to wherever they went. We were charged back for that. Now, the money really does go with the student. So, basically, we dropped 10%, or $7 million in revenue, and at the same time, we dropped $10 million in expenditures. So, we're pretty stable, state funding numbers for this year and the next. The problem with state funding is it changes. It would be nice if we would, could see this funding method play out. I've been a school treasurer for quite a long time, and I've never seen a new funding method come out that ever got fully funded. So, it'll be interesting to see if this one does or not. It'll depend on who the governor is, you know, from whatever point going forward. Right now, the only one we can, we know, because the budget's out there, the governor doesn't buy any old budget, and the budget says that this year, here's how we're being funded, and next year, here's how we're being funded. So, we're good with those two years. But after that, it's, it's kind of a guess. If you would turn to, I mean, there's more on expenditures. I would have liked to have been able to say that we've, we have some history now on the new buildings being opened, but COVID kind of threw a wrench into that. So, I think if we wait another year, we'll at least have some good numbers on those. If you look at page eight, it is the actual forecast itself in the format that is required by the Ohio Department of Education. The first thing everybody wants to do is look at the bottom number, so we may as well just go straight to that. You can see that we still have a surplus at the end of the five-year forecast, but that does assume that the two renewals pass. And that's a renewal at 4.95 mils, and there's also another one at 15 mils. So, those are two very important levy renewals that we need to keep in our, in our mind. We also did talk, when, when those two passed, we talked that we wouldn't ask for any new money until fiscal year '10. And we've been able, I mean, we're in '22 now, and we haven't asked for any additional money. So, we've, we've really stretched it well with, of course, assistance from the state in the change in funding, and the ESAR dollars have helped us out. But it's just something to keep in your mind, because ESAR dollars will present somewhat of a cliff, like we've got personnel being charged to ESAR at this point, and come fiscal year '25, those people come back into general fund, or it's the end of their, I mean, there's no more ESAR dollars coming, to my knowledge. That may change. Who knows? But anyway, I just want you to keep in mind that it's not unusual for the five-year forecast to fluctuate due to several factors, including we're not in control of our revenues. As I was just speaking about state funding, we just, you know, it's, it fluctuates depending on what's going on in Columbus. This forecast is based on assumptions that can change due to new legislation, new things that we're required to do, unfunded mandates. It can change for a lot of reasons. There's no one thing that gets us to the bottom line. We're fortunate to have the cash reserves to kind of go with the ups and downs, but they cover us in years where we have expenditures over revenues, which, if you go back to the very first chart that we looked at, that does start happening out in fiscal year '25 and forward. Like I've said in the past, the purpose of the five-year forecast is to be proactive. We don't want to just sit back and hope that the state will provide. I want to remind you that the last time that we asked for new operating money was in 2010, and we have way outlasted, and we're doing much better than the state norm, which is to go back to the voters about every three years. This forecast suggests that we can stretch even more years out of the money that we have with the big assumption that we can renew those two mil, those two levies that I talked about. The last thing, and probably the most important thing that I always close with, is that we, as a district, are committed to being responsible stewards of all the funds that pass through our system. And with this explanation, I will be asking the board later in the agenda to approve the forecast as presented for submission to the Ohio Department of Education.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for the Treasurer?
I have a question.
From the five-year forecast?
It's just a general question. With the trend of real estate values increasing approximately double digits, do you expect for us to be able to hold off more than by 2025 for the renewals if the trend continues to increase as it's doing with the values?
Well, no, because just the increase in values does not produce more income for us, because House Bill 920, I'm sure everybody's heard of it. It's been on the tips of everybody's tongue forever. But what it does is say that, at the time that you pass the millage, with the valuations that you have, it generates a certain dollar amount. So, if the values go up, then they reduce that millage so that we continue to receive the same amount of money. So, with the values going up, which was great when the values went down, but as the values go up, the only thing we receive additional on would be new construction and inside millage.
Thank you.
Madam Treasurer, quick question. It always seems like, since I've been on this board, we're always pretty close on these things, and then that fifth year is always so crazy. Is there anything in the fifth year on this that you can explain on why the revenue in general is, is the, is there a funding change in that year? Is there, I mean, why is our fifth year always, revenue always so far down?
Well, probably the main reason is because I'm very conservative. But beyond that...
Because I think since I've been on the board, we're always projecting a huge deficit in the fifth year, and we've been very fortunate, we haven't got to that point.
Deficit spending. Yeah. The other thing is things like our medical insurance benefits. I keep a 12% in there for each year. Like this year, it was only 2%. So, if it changes from 12 to 2, that's a huge difference.
Yeah.
And then the other thing is, like I was saying about the state foundation funding, the state funding, is that will we be funded the way the plan is right now? I don't believe we will, so that's not in there. We don't believe it'll ever be fully funded. I say "we" being Treasurers in general.
So, what you're saying is, this is a very, in your opinion, a very conservative five-year forecast. Okay. Any, any other questions?
I have one more question. When you say that we have a 4.5 mil, and I believe you said a 15 mil, how long were they, and have they expired as of yet? And when will they expire?
Okay, if you look at the first graph that I showed you.
Yes, thank you, I'm sorry.
The, well, actually, you really can't see it. But at the end of fiscal year '24, there should be a very small salmon color up there, because half of the 4.95 mil levy expires at the end of calendar year '24.
'24.
Yeah. Then the 15 mil, the emergency levy, half of it expires, not half of it. We collect only half a year in fiscal year '25, and then the full year of the 4.95. And then in fiscal '26, we have the, everything needs renewed. So, anyway, having said that, we need to pass the 4.95 in '24. Actually, we need to pass it in '23 for collection in '24. And then the 15 mil, we need to pass in '24 for collection in '25.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments by the board? Okay, thank you, Madam Treasurer. Appreciate your five-year forecast. And that will be later on the agenda to approve. Moving along on the agenda, visitors are always welcome. We look forward to hearing from our visitors, and our policy is if you sign up a week in advance, you can speak for about 15 minutes. And if you sign up five minutes before the meeting, you can speak for five minutes. And we have actually two, so we'll start off with Aiden Poehl, Leiria High Senior. Would like to address the board regarding equitable work. Aiden, it's all yours.
Hi, guys. So, my name is Aiden Poehl. I'm a senior at Leiria High School. I'm the president of National Honor Society, Key Club, and Spanish Club. I run cross-country, and run track. I'm a link crew leader, and I'm section head of the trumpets. And I am one of two people to win the Pride Scholarship from the LGBTQ Center in Greater Cleveland. Growing up in a Catholic church, I was taught that being gay was a sin, and that gay people were going to hell. Luckily, luckily, my parents supported gay marriage and transgender individuals. Before my mom passed away, she made sure that my dad was going to support me through the rough things that society will throw at me. Just this last year, I was serving at my church, and a guest priest was giving a homily. He then proceeded to say that gays, lesbians, transgender people were going to hell, and that they were abomination to this society. I stood up in front of my church that I grew up in, and I left. My dad told me that he went to the priest, and he said something, and the priest told him that, okay, okay, and that it was funny. In my personal life, my mom's family supports me. While on my dad's side, I have some families that have found out that I was gay and have treated me differently ever since. I hope that none of you, none of you have felt this here. During the years that I've been in high school, I have helped make big impacts on this district. During my freshman year, I started to notice what it was like to be gay in America, from the countless times of being called a nasty queer, or the F-word, or being told that God was sending you to hell, to even to being, not able to donate blood in the school's blood drive. This sparked my activism for equity, equality, and LGBTQ activism. My interact, this, this started after my interaction with Valant, the blood donation center that comes to the high school multiple times a year. I decided that the first place that LGBTQ students should be in the school district. To make light to this issue, I met with Ms. Schloss and her cabinet my freshman year about how they can make a more equitable sex education while also informing them how Ohio schools are not considered safe for LGBTQ students. Every two years, Blissin, who is the leading national education organization focused on ensuring safe and affirming schools for LGBTQ students, creates a survey that students across the country take if the state has, is safe for LGBTQ students. The report from 2017 and 2019 states that Ohio is not considered safe for LGBTQ students. After talking to people I look up to in the district, I asked if I could do some professional development. The answer was yes. During my sophomore year, I taught some of your staff about how to create a more safe space for LGBTQ plus students. After, I started to see more space, safe spaces across the high school and even throughout the district. But this journey's had its ups and downs, of course. In my junior year, a fellow peer quoted the Bible to me. This, this student said, "If a man has sexual relations with a man as one does with a woman, both have done what is detestable. They are put to death, their blood on their, their heads." This is quoted in Leviticus 20:13. Then, he said he wanted to fight me. I will never forget feeling that pain. After that encounter, I looked at the Student Code of Conduct for protection. I found that nowhere in the Student Code of Conduct stated that there was the words gender or sexuality as a form of discrimination. After three long years, it finally was changed with a helping aid to push for LGBTQ equity for the youth. This, with this addition to the Code of Conduct, I've been able to teach more teachers how to make their rooms and classrooms more inclusive. Sadly, the problems run deeper than the school systems. Effective on September 30th, 2021, Section 4743.10 of Ohio Reserve Code states that a medical provider, healthcare institution, or healthcare payer has the freedom to decline, perform, participate in, or pay for any healthcare service which violates the private practitioner's, institution, or payer's consensus as formed by moral, ethical, or religious beliefs, or by held by, by particular institutions of the payer, meaning that a medical provider can deny healthcare to LGBTQ plus individuals because of how God made them when they were born. Ohio legislators have also passed the Save Women's Sports Act, which will stop letting transgender women play and student ath, stu, transgender women, student athletes play in women's sports. This would hurt LGBTQ plus athletes. In the last couple months, two Ohio Republican representatives have introduced House Bill 616, a Don't Say Gay bill. It states in this bill, "The school's district's board shall not select any textbook, instructional curriculum, or academic curriculum that promotes any diverse or inherently racist content." To me, I'm horrified if this bill gets passed. Do they understand that LGBTQ plus youth are more than four times likely to commit suicide than their peers? No, they don't. If this bill gets passed, I believe that LGBTQ plus youth will have an even higher, harder time feeling accepted in an educational environment. But let's think, does Title IX still apply? I don't think so. This year, I've worked with the athletic department on how to get diversity training for the coaches and its staff. I also decided to do my senior project on equitable curriculum and student resources. I've seen the hard work that Ms. Matthews and her team is doing for a more equitable school, district, and I don't want her, her team's hard work to be left in the shadows. But the fight can't stop here. After I leave this district, I plan on attending the University of Massachusetts in Boston to major in political science and a minor in public policy. When I leave, I hope that my peers and my family and the LGBTQ community are being protected in this district, because we are proud to be pioneers, and I don't want Leiria schools to be a place where my family, of LGBTQ plus students, staff, and family are not being welcomed or helped when needed. Thank you, guys.
Great. Okay. Thank you, Aiden. Appreciate you. We appreciate you sharing your thoughts with us. Great. We also have Mr. Parker would like to address the board on the Northwood School Boundary Change. Mr. Parker?
Thank you, school board members. I've come here to speak tonight to address the changes in Northwood Elementary School boundaries. We were informed on April 14th that our children would no longer be attending Northwood Elementary School and have been assigned to Illy Elementary School. To say we were shocked is an understatement. For the sake of time, knowing I only have five, 15 minutes, I will streamline what conversations I had regarding this issue. However, I am more than willing to give details if requested. I contacted the schools and had multiple conversations with the administration to include Brian Kokei, Amy Higgins, and Superintendent Anne Schloss. It was determined that my youngest daughter could remain at Northwood Elementary because she has no younger siblings that they would have to address. However, by the time I was told this after, well, it was after spring break, I was already in contact with other parents in my neighborhood that had received the same letter and had voiced their displeasure. After discussing with my wife, we decided that we had to continue to set examples for our children that you should fight for what you believe in. Having grown up in the neighborhood and having bought my house specifically in the neighborhood, in the Windsor area, I feel strongly about keeping our neighborhood children in their neighborhood school. I thought back to prior to 2020, when the school board was asking for voters to approve the bond levy to build the new schools. We were told that north of the Ohio Turnpike would go to the new campus on the north side. I remember attending a town hall meeting at Windsor Elementary and asking the question of the administration, administrator's president, how this was going to affect my, how this would affect my neighborhood that currently went to Windsor, and being told that they would be going to the new elementary school being built on the soccer fields. They added that they were looking into the situation we had where some Windsor kids went to Westwood Middle. Well, we're now in the second year of the new school, and that promise is already being broken by the school administration. This leads me to begin my research, boundary, researching boundary changes and what else had been said to the taxpaying citizens and parents. First, a bit of research I did, I found that Leiria City Schools' policy states that the board determines school boundaries. The superintendent makes the recommendations based off of certain criteria aligned in the policy. This tells me that Superintendent Anne and her team has made the recommendation, and that my request to reevaluate must go to the board. I am new to following school board procedures, but I couldn't find anywhere these boundaries were approved in a board minute, board meeting minutes before sending out these letters we received. As a taxpayer and parent, I believe something like this should have a vote on by the school board before implementation. I also found an article from 2020 that reads, "We had to do what was, we, let me check if I quote this right. We had to do was look at the best way to get the students to the school that is closest to them." Superintendent Anne Schloss said. "They're not passing a school to go to a school unless it depends on age level. We looked at the neighborhoods and tried to see where kids were going now and what made sense to try to have as little disruption to their journey as possible. At that time, it was important enough to say and be quoted, but now it's okay to make these disruptions to our neighborhood." In conversations, I asked why we were not told about the boundary changes, might, why we were not told the boundaries might be changing, and Mrs. Schloss said that she had been upfront on the possibility. However, not a single parent, teacher, or person in my neighborhood that I have spoken with was aware of any such action until the letters came out. In 2020, before the new schools opened, the school administration thought the boundary changes that affected our children were significant enough that they held multiple meetings to answer questions and to get community member feedback before implementation. However, this time, no courtesy was given. Another article I found was one where Leiria City Schools offered the cohorts to students to stay in the school they started in rather than go to the new school. Schloss said, I quote, "We were to lessen, we tried to lessen the blow as much as possible, and we don't want to just yank them from where they feel comfortable." The first article... The first article I mentioned also discusses the cohort choice and states, "The reason we did that is we know how important it is for students to be with their friends they've had." Well, why is this cohort concept not being offered this time? I find it questionable that in 2020, it is important to not disrupt a student's educational experience and then turn 180 degrees in 2022 and not be concerned with the student's school continuity with friends and staff. I look past, I look at the past years when my daughters were growing up. I have a 16, a 10, and a nine-year-old. And I remember riding bikes across Gulf Road to friends' houses on Brook Valley, Woodridge, Windsor, Whitman, and Canterbury. These are the same streets that I grew up playing with friends from my neighborhood elementary school. I grew up on Brook Valley and went to Windsor from second to third, second to sixth grade after leaving St. John's on West River to attend the school with neighborhood children. My sisters and I made this change even though her mom was a teacher at St. John's. Her belief was that growing up and going to school with the same children was vital to creating social skills and forming friendships. If this boundary change goes into effect, our neighborhood kids will be isolated from other children that attend the same school. Crestview, Nottingham, and Buckingham only tie into neighborhoods across Gulf Road, which means there's not a single neighborhood, there's not a single neighbor that our children could safe, single neighborhood that our children could safely, with or without parents, ride their bikes to walk, ride to bikes, ride their bikes to or walk. Additionally, the days of riding the bikes to school on nice days are gone because riding bikes on Gulf Road Hill, Gulf Road Hill just isn't safe. I know that keeping neighborhoods together is important because I've seen the difference in friendships of all three of my daughters and their friends with those that are in our neighborhood versus those that require a car ride to play. The ones that are close and spend time together at school and around the neighborhood are almost like a friendship that you have with any teammate. You count on each other, and you can lift each other up when no one else can. Through my walking around our neighborhood, I learned that because Ely is an Ed Choice school, some of our parents with children affected have actually submitted application and/or have been accepted to a private school, example of St. Jude's. Some of these parents told me that if their child is going to have to go to a school outside our neighborhood, they might as well send them to a private school and have Alariah City Schools pay the Ed Choice tuition for them. However, the parents who told me that they've already been accepted said if children stay at Northwood Elementary, they would stay in their public neighborhood school. There are other, there are other children that will now benefit from this move since they are already attending private schools and will now have the Alariah City Schools pay the Ed Choice tuition for them. Current students that are going to St. Jude's have already been contacted regarding the Ed Choice to apply. I worked with a guy who told me yesterday. I've already got a letter from St. Jude's. We have already made the application. According to Ohio Department of Education, that's a loss of $5,500 per K through eight and $7,500 per high schooler. In 2019, Alariah Schools brought in an outside group from Schlesky Center. I hope I pronounced that right. I was, I asked to attend. I believe a two-day seminar and worked with the teachers and administrators to guide Alariah City Schools into a future and direction focusing on what is best for the students through a collaborative effort. It was my impression that the school administration was trying to work with community stakeholders, parents, and concerned citizens and teachers to make the schools the best educational environment for the students. However, this change going out without any knowledge of classroom teachers or parents of students involved shows that this desire to have a collaborative working relationship is nothing more than, well, maybe a little bit of lip service to the voters. While we do understand that administration is trying to do by balancing numbers, we believe moving kids out of their neighborhood schools should be a last resort. I believe there are other options to lessen class size or reduce the number of classes rather than move children away from their neighborhood schools. Ms. Schloss even stated last board meeting that they're probably going to have to redo boundaries again next year. Does this mean our children can be shipped to a new school next year and then back to the original one, or maybe even to another school in 23, 24? Our children should not just be numbers to the school administration and to the school board. The administration and board should be looking at how these moves will affect the child as a whole, positive and negative, and then make an informed decision. I present this petition. I have over 80 community stakeholders in the community Nottingham, Crestview, Nottingham, Buckingham neighborhood that are requesting the school board reconsider Superintendent Anne Schloss's recommendation of adjusting the Northwood School, Elementary School's boundary to exclude our neighborhood. As always, we offer our time and assistance to the school board, to any school administrator, and to any other city, Alariah City School to ensure that the children have the best opportunity to success. I thank you so much for your time, and I will, if I can approach, if I can turn the board. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Alec.
Super, yes. Thank you, Mr. Parker.
There's 88 names that are registered voters that are in the Crestview, Nottingham, and Buckingham. Not all have children, but they are stakeholders, they are community members that support this school.
Okay.
Thank you.
Super, thank you very much. Okay, one thing I want to talk about briefly here before we move on to Jennifer, so it'll just be a minute. Just for the record, I believe our policy about changing boundaries, does our policy actually state it as board required action in it for boundary changes or just recommendation? And then obviously, the board can make changes to that.
Sure. The policy just states recommendation.
Okay. It does not say board required action?
No.
Okay.
I do have a policy we wanted to read it.
No, that's okay. All right, well, I appreciate that. And one of the things, obviously, when we started the levies for the schools, we knew the way we would receive the funding and we built the schools that this time would come that we would have to change boundaries, and it's never easy. And we appreciate when citizens come forward, share their thoughts, and obviously, this is something that the board will consider and will talk with the superintendent. We do appreciate when, when people get involved like that. So thank you for taking the time and the effort, Mr. Parker. Okay. And we have one speaker. Jennifer O'Hara signed up today to speak for five minutes, and she would like to talk about school open enrollment.
Same thing. I'm just going to touch with him. I am new to the area. My husband grew up here. We used to live over by the old Ely, and I work at a restaurant, and I manage a restaurant in Alariah, and a lot of issues. I was able to touch with the community that way. And Ely was closing, and she said the market was really hot last year. That's when I purchased our home. So that was an exciting time for us, and Windsor was the closest to our home. And I live at the very end of Crestview, and I bought that home knowing that Windsor was there, that potentially one day I wouldn't have to let my son ride a bus to school, that he could ride with his friends. And we just happen to be in that area that is, got the golf course right next to us, and across the street, all of those kids would be going to Northwood. And for me, it's kind of devastating if my kids can't be involved in the community. I love to be involved in the community. I feel like a fish out of the water here, but the more that I get comfortable with being around, I, I would love to do more just with the school. And I have two small boys that are starting school this year, and Ely is a distance from my home, so that's essentially saying he'd never be able to ride his bike to school, be with his friends that are going to school. And then I hope that we can, I just want to know why, why my, just that particular area is being secluded, and he would potentially be probably the first one on the bus and the last one to get off the bus. That calls for a long day for us, and I just, I just would like to know more. And if there's anything or reconsideration, just for maybe our kids just in that, those streets. I'm fighting for my own children, and I would love to fight for the other kids in the community, but unfortunately, there's-
Which, which one is Crestview over there?
The first street on the left as you come up the hill.
Okay.
And it winds all the way around.
Yeah. And so, and I think it's just that area, if I'm wrong, but it's just that area that those children, and I don't know how many children are in that area, but the area is wonderful, and there's a lot of kids that are over there, and I would hope that he can just stay with those kids, and that's my case, so thank you.
Okay. Super, thank you for, thank you for sharing that with us. Okay. All right. Moving along on the agenda. Board of Education, the minutes for the May 4th, 2022 meeting have been posted. Hopefully, the board members have had a chance to read them over, and I'd ask for a motion to approve the minutes as posted.
So moved.
I have a motion by Board Member Karstoffen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Gabhart. Any questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Gabhart?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mrs. Seigwin?
Aye.
And Mr. Alec?
Aye. Motion carries. Madam Treasurer, you have action items for us this evening?
Yes, I do. Just a couple. The first one is the financial report for the month of April. And actually, that is it. The five-year forecast is separate.
Okay. And we need different motions on each one of those?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the monthly financial report?
So moved.
Motion by Board Member Seigwin. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Board Member Hauser. Any questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Seigwin?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Gabhart?
Aye.
And Mr. Alec?
Aye. Motion carries. And then, do you want to add anything, or should we go right into a motion to approve the fire forecast?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the fire forecast?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Gabhart?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mrs. Seigwin?
Aye.
And Mr. Alec?
Aye. Motion carries. Any other reports for us this evening, Madam Treasurer?
Just a couple things. You received your school pictures, and I need for you to select one of those before you leave tonight and, and give that back to me so we can get with the photographer, get those, the actual pictures, and get them posted on our website.
So who gets to pick the board picture?
Oh, we didn't even see that.
Oh, I haven't seen it either.
Yeah. So. Okay. All right. Anything else?
And secondly, we are looking at a need to change the June 22nd board meeting to June 29th and the August 3rd board meeting to August 10th. So I don't know if we want to just think about that, and we'll put it on the agenda for-
Let's do that.
Can you say those again?
It's, we'd like to move June 22nd to June 29th, and that's due to the RFPs. We, we need that extra week. And then the August 3rd, we'd like to move to August 10th because the entire administrative team or cabinet will be at a professional development meeting.
Ah, okay. All right, so we have that. Maybe what you could do is send a reminder to the board, and then please put that on the agenda for the next meeting. Any other items for us this evening, Madam Treasurer?
That is all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Moving along on the agenda, Madam Superintendent, you have action items for us this evening?
I do tonight. Thank you. First, to approve the Jaworski Physical Therapy Training Services for the 2223 school year. Also, to approve the contract with the Murray Ridge K-12 for the upcoming school year. To approve Navigate 360 for three years. It's through 25. This is some software that helps us with threat assessments, gives us reports, and does a lot of data for us that's mandated by the state. Also, to approve the agreement between Vincent and Alariah Catholic. To approve the overnight field trip. I think this is the last middle school going to Washington, DC. To approve the 2223 county service agreement with the ESC. To approve the following attendance and paraprofessionals to attend the extended school year with the Sped students. To approve, or to, excuse me, to declare the impracticality of providing transportation to the following students that are going to First Baptist. And that concludes my action items.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the superintendent's action items?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion by Board Member Gabhart. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Hauser. Any questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gabhart?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mrs. Seigwin?
Aye.
And Mr. Alec?
Aye. Motion carries. Madam Superintendent, we always have an exciting superintendent other this time of year.
I think it's the only superintendent other of the year, but this is very exciting. Two facts with this list of graduates, there, well, first of all, there are 437 right now, but also, we have 20 staff members with graduating seniors.
Oh, really?
Which is a huge amount. But also, in my eyes, kind of that, that gold star of you'd send your own child where you work to our schools because they're so superior. So that's kind of my feeling on the stamp of, you know, this is where my child goes. So we always love that. And again, you'll turn through the pages, lots of them. And that is it for Superintendent Other.
You're not reading them?
I'm saving that for the night of.
Okay.
So I had to sign everyone, and you're not, no, never mind. All right. Could I have a motion to approve this very exciting list here for the graduates at the June 7th, 2022 graduation?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Board Member Gabhart. And a second by Board Member Karstoffen. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll for the graduates?
Mr. Gabhart?
Aye.
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mrs. Seigwin?
Aye.
And Mr. Alec?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. So we have some personnel action items this evening.
Yes. Would you like me to go through all of them and then introduce some people?
Sure.
Okay. Let me go through all of them, and then we'll, we have several people here tonight. First of all, to approve the appointment of the following certified administrators. Next, to approve the retirement of the certified staff member at, as below. Helen Prose. Thank you, Helen. To approve the resignation of the following certified staff. This is probably the largest list of resignations we have, but we have some that are, we have one that's teaching abroad, a couple that have gotten married and moved, and all of the above. So we wish them well and thank them for, for their service. Also, to approve the resignation of the following athletic supplemental contract for a non-district worker. To approve the athletic supplemental contracts to the following staff members. To approve the athletic supplemental contracts to the following non-district employees. To approve the appointment of the following certified staff. Couple new teachers. We're, we've got a lot of openings posted, and we're bringing in some new, younger teachers, which is always great, too. To approve the employment on continuing contracts for the following certified staff. To approve the one-year limited contracts for the following certified staff. To approve the renewal of the following certified and classified administrative contracts. This is something we do annually. Also, to approve the stipend for up to 20 hours for the following, I believe these counselors that do the extended time to help with student scheduling at the high school mainly. To approve the stipend for the following extended summer learning. This is the K through eight list. We have a lot of teachers that are going to be working with our students over the summer. To approve the stipend for up to 20 hours for the following summer programming counselor. To approve the payment of up to 10 days at the employee's daily rate for the following employee for court date appearances. To approve the stipend for the following summer learning for, this is the high school list. To approve the payment for up to five days before the start of the school year for the following employee. He does the homeschool packets for us. To approve, this is something we do each year, and termination seems like such a strong year, but it's legally, we have to. Any of the long-term subcontracts, tutor contracts, those all have to be terminated each year before the start of the next year. To approve the resignation of the following classified staff member. To approve the stipend. This is an annual for Patty Steidler for the 40 hours plus. She works way more than that. She works way more than that on graduation. To approve the two-year limited contracts for the following classified staff. And that concludes my action items. That was a long list.
That is a long list. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the superintendent's personnel action items?
So moved.
I have a motion by board member Karstoffen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by board member Gabhart. Any questions or comments?
Yes. You said the Brown, Burnett and, how many? It's a court date? What's?
So they're our home liaisons and they work with the House Bill 410 with truancy and attendance. So they, they spend a lot of time in court, working with the families.
Okay.
Gotcha.
And Mrs. Blatt and Mrs. Matthews are not leaving their positions?
No, no. And I'll, I'll tell a little bit about their, their new positions right after.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? With none, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Gabhart?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mrs. Seigwin?
Aye.
And Mr. Alec.
Aye. Motion carries. Madam Superintendent, would you like to do some introductions here?
Yes. First, I'd like to introduce Karen Wolbert. Did I get that right?
You did.
And Karen is a brand-new teacher that is going to teach integrated science at the high school next year, fresh from graduation.
And a long-term sub?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I've been there since January.
Wonderful.
I have a long-term sub contract.
And you love it?
Love it.
All right.
Really excited to be there next year.
Wonderful. Thank you and welcome, Karen.
Thank you.
And then, as far as our, our change in titles, and, and I just want to say a few words first. You know, one thing in, when I became superintendent that was really important to me was to assemble the right team. And, you know, over the last couple of years, boy, team has meant everything. You know, COVID and everything, the, who builds five buildings during COVID? I mean, well, it's a pandemic and, and we did it and did it very successfully. So team, team is so important and I, I really can't say enough about our team, which, you know, they're 900-plus. But we're embarking on the next phase, as I call it, and looking at the strategic plan and everything. And one thing that I've, I've talked to President Alec and over the last six months was making sure, you know, that we not only look like the district we want to be, but make sure we don't lose the, the people that are building that district together. And I think these two individuals are, they're going to be doing the same job as they do now, but yet we'll start to look at some, you know, some of the other decision-making that I go through. It's always good to have people when I'm out of district that can be there, that, that can make the decisions, spur the moment, and I have 100% trust in these two individuals. And if you look at our comparable-like districts, this is, these are roles that are there and we just, you know, did not, did not have these positions. So it's, it's merely changing their title. It's well-deserved. I count on them very much. And, and I think we have the team in place that's going to take us through the next phase of our strategic plan and, and getting back to what I'll call the new normal, hopefully, without COVID. And I just want to say congratulations to Denise Blatt and Natalie Matthews. Again, they love Alaria and we want to keep, keep our, our team together and keep moving forward. So have a little, little gift to say thank you and welcome and to your new work. You're going to enjoy these because it's going to be back to business tomorrow. So. Very good.
And I'd just like to say, this is my seventh year as an administrator in Alaria. I'm wrapping up my seventh year and there's no other place I'd rather be. I've always dedicated my life to urban education and have no other intent to ever leave any of this.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Great.
Say something, Dan. Now I am, now you're going to speak. Well, this is the end of my third year and I feel like I've been here 10 years. So I feel like home is family. I know it works the better in my whole career in education. So thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. Thank you. You know, one quick comment on that. When superintendent approached myself and the board about, you know, future leaders, we obviously have vision planning coming up here and we kind of talked about we don't have a vision in place yet, but if you kind of, we, we almost paralleled like what Jim Collins said in the Good to Great. It's about the who. It's so important to get the who correct. And obviously, these two could be superintendents in other places and we're so fortunate to have them. And when we have great people that help us, they will help us actually get the bus moving, as they say in that book, in the right direction. And we are very fortunate to have that type of leadership and we're, we're very happy that you're still here and thank you very much. And you two working with Ann, we are a very fortunate district, so. Okay. Other items here?
Just the superintendent report real, real quick. Last Friday, it's one of my favorite days of the year, Special Olympics. What an awesome day. The weather couldn't have been better. The team couldn't have done a better job. We also partnered, we called Lorraine County Community College and they sent 15 employees out to, to help. So we're building partnerships in that way, but what a great day and PD won the mascot race.
I saw that.
We loaded it with Jackie's son. Well, we wanted to.
PD won pretty convincingly, too.
Yes, yes, yes. Also, prom was Saturday and, and a wonderful night. No problems, Tim said. I saw the conga line on, on video and it looked exciting. Any, anything from that, Tim?
In person, if you remember a few years ago, we went from what was traditionally done at Wagner's West Lake, going to Lodge in New Rush Township right outside of Oberlin. So it was neat to see our students go from Alaria Square to then the Oberlin campus for those before the dance pictures. Freezing them for the dinner and dance.
And I will say, the administrative team of Alaria High served the students, which is a really cool thing, too. So also, tonight is Family Fun Night. For those that didn't know, the, the cells, our community engagement liaison's called around to a bunch of businesses and got discounts. No one was allowed to give homework, so they got, they can go out and do things with their family, which is a cool idea. And also, in, in the next, probably the, the meeting in July, but you will get a PowerPoint before that because the staff is going to see it on May 27th. But we're calling our new plan for next year, reset. And we're, we're hoping that it gives us that, you know, we've been through a tough couple of years and we need to reset, reboot, restart, any of the rees, as I call them, and focus on getting back to what we do best. And, and we have a lot of plans in place and, and we thank the board for always supporting what we're doing, but we'll get that to you soon. We'll give you the PowerPoint and then we'll do a presentation in, at the July meeting.
Good.
So thank you.
Great. Okay. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Okay. Moving along on the agenda, Board of Education. Are there any items for the good of the cause from the Board of Education?
Yes, I have a couple.
Okay.
Number one, there was an editorial in the paper today that said that, talking about the different buildings, the school buildings, that Alaria City Schools still owned Jefferson and we have not owned Jefferson for probably eight years. So I just wanted to clear that up. And I don't know, I was walking my dog the other day over by the, the rec center and I noticed a number of cars cutting through at night, the schools. And they were traveling fairly fast at heights. And I don't know if there's a way to shut one entrance down at night. I don't know if that's possible.
I will talk to Mr. Kokai. I know years ago, we used to have gates like at Oakwood because I used to wait at six in the morning for Tom Brunner, or Tom to come and let me in, the custodian when I was principal there. So I know that's been something we did in the past, so maybe it's something we need to look at.
Okay. There's a lot of cars going through there. I was surprised.
Thank you. Thank you. I will look into that.
I hadn't gone through there and thought you couldn't go all the way.
All right. Any other items from the board? Okay.
I just want to say that the, the art show was excellent. The teachers, everyone did an excellent job. Yes. It was beautiful. Last week here at Kindergarten Village, it was beautiful.
Amy took a lot of really cool pictures.
Yes.
Yeah.
Great.
The cookies were good, too.
All right. Got to have good cookies. All right. Any other items from the board? Okay. With none, I'd like to ask for an executive session.
Forward, consider the deployment and compensation of a public official. Consider charges against the regulated person and to consider matters required to get conflict by party.
Any action to follow?
Yes.
With possible action to follow. So that verbiage, with possible action to follow. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A motion by board member Karstoffen. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by board member Hauser. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstoffen?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Mr. Gabhart?
Aye.
Mrs. Seigwin?
Aye.
And Mr. Alec.
Aye. Motion carries and we will be off to executive session. Thank you.